Item one, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone, and speak before making any comments. Thank you. You can also register online at seabrooktx.gov-publiccomment in the future. I have five names on the list. Carol Reed, you're first. Thank you. Make sure the microphone is on. It should be green light. Yes, right there. And there's a countdown timer.
There it is. Now it's on.
There you go.
My name is Carol Reed, and I live at 1202 Fourth Street in Old Seabrook. Thank you for giving me time to share my thoughts. Believing that all politics are local, I invested a lot of time this year learning the ins and outs of Seabrook and the candidates running in our most recent election. I voted for some of you, and some I did not, but I truly believe that each of you has a true calling to servant lead in our beautiful city, and you all want what is best for its citizens and its growth. I decided to let my voice be heard regarding a business that wants to move in a few hundred yards from my front door. To give you some context, I have spent the last 29 years as an advisor to small business owners, coaching in all areas of business growth and employee management. There are several topics that are universal to all owners, no matter the type or size of establishment. Where do I find the best employees? How do I differentiate my offering from those of my competitors? And where should I put my storefront? To the topic at hand, I have been scratching my head. Why would a new coffee shop want to open in Old Seabrook? It simply doesn't make good business sense. From what I have learned from a bit of research, Soul Freak has a great location in League City. What do they offer? Coffee, frozen drinks, pastries, and fried pies. Hmm, sounds like a couple other coffee shops in town. They do not roast their own coffee, like Damn Fine, Seabrook Waffle Company, or El Lago. What about their local art offerings? Well, I think I can already get that at Genuine Treasures, or cruise on over to El Lago Coffee Company and look at their antiques. If I was to meet the owner of Soul Freak as an advisor, I would respectfully and lovingly say, "You don't roast your own coffee. People can buy local art at other spots in the area, and there are other coffee shops in the area that already have homemade versions of the food items you bring to the table." I'd pass. Where I'm concerned, though, is why the EDC thought that giving Soul Freak over $40,000 to move in makes any financial sense. By my quick math, I see that Soul Freak's sales will have to be over $2.7 million to recoup what the EDC is proposing to grant them. The tragic part of this is that if Soul Freak does indeed make this money, it will most certainly weaken the sales for at least four businesses in the immediate area. So the city will not see any growth from these funds. Put in a barbecue joint, a sushi bar, or even a popular franchise that will drive more people to the area, giving all of the great businesses back here more exposure. When people who live on Toddville say they don't know the backyard is there, you have a problem getting the word out. Marketing is what is desperately needed, not another coffee shop. Thank you for your time, and have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Carol. Mel Jarnigan.
Hi, my name is Mel Jarnigan. My wife Diane and I own Damn Fine Coffee and Fried Pies. Do my best to not get overly emotional, but right now, I'm pretty hurt and frustrated. I'm worried about my family's future, my livelihood. Eight years ago, we decided to buy a property here in Seabrook. We decided to build our dream. We applied for EDC money at that time, and we were denied. We, in turn, turned around and decided to spend about $200,000 of our own money building out, expanding our property, improving our property. Basically, our entire life savings and our retirement money. Took us about two years to build it. During this time, we've endured COVID, the 146 construction. We were told to bear with the city, and there would be signage. There would be all this wonderful stuff. We're still waiting to see it. We experienced a devastating fire, which required us to rebuild our entire restaurant, and once again, the EDC refused to give us a dime. Now, this council is offering $40,000 to a direct-competing business to open less than a four-minute walk from my business. Can somebody explain how this makes any sense, from a business standpoint, from a community standpoint, any reasonable standpoint? Putting a business in Old Seabrook like this makes zero sense. There are already a number of businesses here that are struggling to survive. Inflations cost my cost of goods to go up over 200% in the last three years. You know, our business, Seabrook Waffle Company, Genuine Treasures, El Lago, All Spas, every one of these places provides the things that this new business is supposedly going to bring to the community. So there isn't going to be no net increase. All we're going to be doing is siphoning off sales from the existing businesses that are already struggling. And what that's going to mean is that, you know, some of us are just not going to make it, and we're going to lose our livelihood, our business, and not only that, the tax revenue to the city and the jobs that we create. I love my community. We've made it a priority to be good neighbors, to be an asset, the place that we call home. We make our property open to anybody in the community that comes out and wants to hold an event. We hold coffee with a cop there. We've done community events, school fundraisers, petted options, and we even had a wedding there. And we don't charge anybody anything to use our facility because we feel it's a part of our job as a member of the community. I know that all of you here are not paid to be here. You're out of census civic duty to do what's right to move our city forward. Many of you run your own businesses. How would you feel if your city brought in a direct competitor, put them right next door, and paid them to compete with you? When Seabrook Cheese Company opened, we celebrated that. When LA Taco opened, we celebrated that. Those are things that were needed here in this community. But to put a business that is in direct competition to the core businesses that are already here is a zero-sum game. In the end, we're going to be the ones that lose, all of us. Just a note to anybody who's just basically saying, "I'm afraid of competition." I've been a chef for 30 years. I've been roasting coffee for 30 years. Competition's the last thing I'm afraid of. I'm afraid of unfair competition. And when you're paying somebody to move in within, you know, within less than a quarter a mile of my business, you're giving them an unfair advantage. I believe the $40,000 that's being allocated to this new business could be much better spent on community outreach, for marketing, and to support the businesses that are already here that are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Diane Gao, would you, next, please?
My name is Diane Gao. I live at 910 Hall in Old Seabrook. My husband Mel and I own Damn Fine Coffee and Fried Pies, also at that address. A little bit different perspective on what I do with the business is I've gone over the proposal that Soul Freak had made to the EDC and also the EDC's recommendations, and I have a couple points I'd like to bring up and see if there's some clarifications that I can understand it better. First, how is a drive-thru going to work at that location? I'm aware of the issues that LA Taco had to go through to get theirs approved, and when we originally were looking to open our business, what was required for us to do that and decided that it was just going to be too much. Also, the traffic flow on Main and Hall that will be impacted. There is no extra room to have any kind of extra traffic, especially on Hall, if there's any kind of backup or anything on there. And then also about the required parking spaces. These are all issues we've had to deal with with our business, and just at that location, don't see how that works. Soul Freak also states that they are an art collective, and they support local vendors and not just a coffee shop. I think it would be interesting to know what percentage of their sales come from the art and other vendors that they carry versus their coffee sales. But with a proposal of a drive-thru window, they are not inviting customers into their shop. They are selling coffee at a drive-thru. They are a coffee shop. Their motto is supposedly collaboration and not competition, and that's not true. They are competition. They are coming into a concentration of established businesses that will directly impact the financial means of those businesses with the help of the city, with the attune of They are not offering anything extra, like we've said, that Damn Fine Coffee, Waffle Company, Genuine Treasures, El Lago Coffee, All Spa don't already offer and are all within a five-minute walk from their location. Soul Freak has already moved two other times. This will be their third time. We cannot just pick up and move to another location. We live here. We own our property. We've lived here for eight years. We've been roasting our coffee for seven years. We've had the coffee shop coming up on a five-year anniversary in July that we've asked the city to do a five-year anniversary to do with us. We host community events. We support the city, local schools. Anytime we're asked, we're happy to help. We've been through it all: COVID, the 146 expansion, promise of signage after its completion that hasn't happened, we had a fire that we had to rebuild from and regain all that momentum, and the continued cost of goods and employee wages over the last few years. We're dealing with all of it, and we struggle through it. And make no mistakes, it has been a struggle back there. We've all been struggling back there for five or six years. Soul Freak will not be bringing anything new income coming in they will be taking away from, and it's been tough back there, and we've all been waiting. So with that being said, I humbly ask that the council not vote tonight and take some time to reconsider the issues that are being presented tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Kelly Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Is that close enough?
I first want to start by seconding everything that they just said.
Okay, back on. Can you hear me? I want to start by seconding everything that they just said. I agree with everything, and not that I have anything against Soul Freak. My husband actually plays music there, but I do agree that it's unfair competition. To get back to what I was going to say. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kelly Stewart. I'm here tonight to speak on something that means a great deal to many of us in Seabrook, the pier at Pine Gully Park. It's on the agenda for discussion this evening. I want this new council and mayor to know that the pier wasn't just some structure stretching into the bay. It was a place where generations of families came to fish, to walk, and to watch the sun rise and fall over Galveston Bay. It stood as a reminder of what makes Seabrook special, and since Tropical Storm Nicholas took it out in 2021, we've been waiting and hoping for action. In the years since, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money, engineering plans that are now being, that we're now being told are no longer viable, designs made obsolete before we ever drove a single piling. And now the new suggestion is to build a so-called hurricane-proof pier, as if we're directly facing the Gulf of Mexico instead of nestled into a bayside community. But here's the truth. We still have the pilings out there that are solid. We've had contractors come out. We've heard from professionals with ideas, options like sleeve caps, selective replacements, and more. This doesn't need to be a multimillion-dollar moonshot. It needs to be a responsible rebuild. We just lost five acres to the port through an industrial district agreement on the northeast side. I understand that was an old contract and that the city made the best of it, but it came with revenue. And I'm asking, where's the investment back into preserving what's left of our east side? The pier is not just another park amenity. It's a symbol of who we were and who we can still be. We've watched the park's budget go toward new pickleball courts, shade structures, and trail granite. Those are all great things, no doubt, but what about fishing? What about the soul of Seabrook? All we have left now is crowded Main Street right outside a former sanitation plant. It's hot, it's cramped, and it's not the experience that people deserve. We lost the boat ramp. We lost the pier, and what we're left with is a city slowly losing its identity as a fishing and boating town. And I'll say it, if we don't make choices to preserve who we are, the Port of Houston will gladly decide for us. The people on this side of town, the east side, my side, deserve better. We deserve to see our community's character protected. Up here is a promise. It's not just about fishing. It's about walking out over the water and remembering that this place was built on salt air, seawater, and hard work. I know five of you are new up here, and I hope that's a good thing. I hope you see with fresh eyes that this is not a line item or a liability, but a legacy. The pier matters to this community, to this coast, and to our future. Please, please, make it a priority again. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. I apologize. I can barely read this last name. Is it Lucille?
Yes.
Is there someone named Lucille that's on the, I apologize?
R-H-A-M-E.
R-H-A-M-E?
No.
I live in Mystic Village. Thank you. Okay, I live in Mystic Village, 1822 Wallington, and our streets have become a racetrack, not from teenagers, from the adults that live in the neighborhood. We have stop signs. Nobody stops. Not any, very seldom does anybody stop at the stop signs. So I'd like, I've heard in the past that Seabrook doesn't allow speed bumps, but I think it's time that that gets considered before some child gets killed, and that is what's going to happen. All the kids, for Christmas or birthdays or whatever, get those little motorized scooters, and they're zipping up and down the street, in and out of the driveways, and if we don't get people to slow down, there's going to be a deadly accident. So I would like to ask that you guys could please consider putting speed bumps in some of our neighborhoods. It's got to slow people down. They're going 50, 60 miles an hour down our neighborhood streets. That's it. That's what I want to ask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, oh, yeah, sorry. Did anybody not have an opportunity to sign in or sign up online that would like to speak? Sorry about that. Okay, thank you. Item 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and members of the city staff may make announcements about city-community events.
All right, so upcoming events, we have on Wednesday, June 11th, at 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Cookies with a Cop. That'll be at Evelyn Metter Branch Library, and that's just a little over a week from today. And the other event that we have is Movie Night at Metter Park, Jumanji: Welcome to the Jungle. That'll be on Saturday, June 14th, 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and that's just not this upcoming weekend, but the weekend after. Is there any other events that I'm missing?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item two, presentations. Item 2.1, Mayor Sweeney to recognize the Seabrook Office of the City Secretary for receiving the Municipal Clerk's Office Achievement of Excellence Award as awarded by the Texas Municipal Clerks Association. We have the award over there that will take some pictures, and then we'll have council come down. It is my honor to recognize an exceptional achievement by our team in the Seabrook Office of the City Secretary. As many of you know, the role of the City Secretary is vital to the transparency, integrity, and effective functioning of our local government. Today, I am proud to announce that our City Secretary's office has been awarded the prestigious Municipal Clerk's Office Achievement of Excellence Award for 2025-2026 by the Texas Municipal Clerks Association. This is an honor and a testament to the outstanding work, leadership, and professionalism demonstrated by our municipal clerk's team, all two of them. This award recognizes municipal clerk offices in Texas that exemplify excellence in areas such as record-keeping, transparency, ethical standards, and innovative practices. Achieving this distinction requires a sustained effort to uphold the highest standards of municipal administration, and it reflects an unwavering dedication to serving our residents with integrity. I want to extend my gratitude to our City Secretary, Rachel Lewis, and our Deputy City Secretary, Mandy Morales. On behalf of the City Council and the residents of Seabrook, I express our appreciation for your service. You've made Seabrook proud, and this achievement is well-deserved. Please join me in congratulating the City Secretary's office for this outstanding achievement. Counsel, join me for a photo, please. Congratulations again, ladies. All right, item three, consent agenda. Item 3.1, approve the minutes of the May 2025 City Council meeting. Item 3.2, approve a correction to item 4.2 of the minutes from the February 18th, 2025 City Council meeting. Item 3.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the ratification of a business development incentive agreement by Soul Freak Holdings LLC, as approved by the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation, SEDC, on May 7, 2025, in accordance with the previously posted Business Assembly Program Project Resolution for New Business Development at 1305 Main Street, in an amount not to exceed $41,400. Do I have a motion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items 3.1, 3.2.
You have to.
Hmm?
You're going to pull?
Yeah, I'm going to pull 3.3.
Okay, we're going to pull item 3.3 from the consent agenda. So we have consent agenda to approve item 3.1, approve the minutes of the May 2025 City Council meeting, and item 3.2, approve a correction to item 4.2 of the minutes from the February 18th, 2025 City Council meeting. I need a motion on that.
Second, a motion.
Counsel member tolled second. All in favor? Unanimous opposed? No, thank you. Now we need to, okay, we'll bring item 3.3 for discussion.
Okay, if I may, I would suggest that we send it back to EDC with the comments that have been made tonight, but I would also like to point out that the improvements, the $41,000, was for capital improvements, for the building itself. It's not for anything like labor or material or anything like that, only for capital improvements to that building, and that's what EDC approved. Also, I think it needs to be pointed out that if another person were to come in and want to do the same thing and not ask for EDC money, the city really doesn't have much authority to tell them, "No, they can't come in and be a competitor." So I would like to suggest that we refer it back to EDC with some comments that have been made tonight, and then have them come forward again.
So I actually have a question regarding that $41,400 for the building improvements. Although I support Damn Fine and, you know, the aforementioned companies and business, I would, at this point in time, vote no on that. But regarding the building, the building updates and that money, would that include any contingencies as far as if that, if that landowner receives the benefit of having that building improved? Are there any contingencies in place that would keep him from raising the rent and pricing that tenant out after they've invested?
We did not get into their lease agreement. I know publicly, the person that made the presentation did say that the lease was being negotiated and that if there is improvements, she was having to pick up a portion of that.
So, so what I understand is if, if we did vote to grant that money for those improvements and this business owner did invest additional funds, the landlord, the city isn't keeping the landlord from raising that rent and pricing out that business?
No, we don't control lease options at all.
So you can't attach contingencies to funds?
No, I mean, we wouldn't be party to the lease agreement between the Soul Freak and the property owner.
But you can't attach contingencies to funds that are given to the landowner?
It's not given to the landowner.
Well, it would be for business improvement, so there could be contingency.
Let me jump in if it's okay. The, I mean, really, the landowner's not a party to this agreement. It's, it's the business owner, and there's no reason why the landowner would be incentivized to be a part of this agreement. It can be done, but it has, it was not done this time, no.
Okay, so it can be done?
It is possible.
I guess that's the root of my question is...
Yeah, to have the, to have a landowner involved in this type of agreement, especially if the lesser, yes. There would be clawbacks associated with stuff like that, but it was not contemplated here. This is simply a business owner approaching the city. So no, the owner was not contemplated as being a party to this agreement.
Okay, but the root of my question was, it can be done?
It is possible legally, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion? Or any further discussion?
Okay, I formally move that we refer this back to EDC.
All right, Councilman Hammond makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman, until that second, so all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. New business, item 4.1, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2025-12, supporting a no-wake zone in the Clear Lake area for the Texas Outlaw Challenge. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Seabrook, Texas, supporting a no-wake zone in and around the Seabrook Clear Lake area on June 20, 2025, during the Texas Outlaw Challenge.
Move to approve 4.1.
Second.
Councilman Hammond makes the motion. Councilman, until that second, so all in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous approved, thank you. Item 4.2, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2025-13, establishing a special fund called Port Houston Funds, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Seabrook, establishing a Port Capital Fund to account for payments made by the Port of Houston Authority, PHA, to the City of Seabrook in the amount of, in accordance with Memorandum of Settlement Agreement, Amendment 3, with Port of Houston Authority and City of Seabrook establishing a Port Capital Fund. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Counsel Amber Sessin makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I actually want to ask a question.
I'm sorry, do I have a second?
In regard to that?
Wait, we need a second before we can have a discussion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Counselmember Cabana seconds. Now we can open for...
Okay, sorry, still learning.
You have to follow the rules.
So, so I think it's, it's wonderful that, I think this does bring a level of transparency, and that's what the voters and the taxpayers have been asking for. I do have one, one question, and I apologize, I know I discussed it with you, Gail, beforehand, but I just kind of want to bring it to the public as well. There's $1.6 million that was committed, and that was specifically for sound mitigation with the rail spur, because there was anticipation, well, not anticipation, we know that with that rail spur attaching and circling around, it's going to bring more sound to the city. So there was discussion about that $1.6 also flowing into that. I would vote to approve the funds that are going to be coming in, the newly accepted funds. However, I just want to be sure that that $1.6, since it's already committed for one dedicated purpose, which is sacred to a lot of people that will suffer the repercussions to that rail spur, that that $1.6 be kept separately from the other funds in discussion.
Okay, and we did discuss, so for the rest of council, there's a resolution that was put in place several years ago with one of the settlement agreements with the port. The agreement was to build a wall, or if a wall could not be built, to deposit $1.6 with the city. That deposit did happen, and subsequently, the council at the time approved a resolution that has the details that the $1.6 was set aside in our reserves for sound. Until that time, we have not touched that. The resolution's attached to it. The only monies that have been touched are to do an initial sound study. The plans are to go back, do a second sound study, see if... The plans are to go back, do a second sound study, see what the implications are, and then go and look what a possible design in that area for a wall or sound mitigation could entail. So, correct, and the counselor is saying that with this one, we did detail in some correspondence this week, all of the funds, including the 1.6. So we would have to pull that resolution, dissolve it, so if we move forward with it, if there's not a desire to dissolve the other resolution and compile that together, we would leave the 1.6 alone with the standing resolution. All other funds that we are anticipating getting from the settlement agreements would then go into this. And again, the idea from staff with this new fund is just that, to make it very transparent, very collective of, you'll see the monies going in. If council on some future date approves a project, you'll see where the funds went out in a special fund. So absolutely, there's no problem if, unless council dissolves the other resolution of keeping those separate.
So we would have to dissolve the first resolution to keep the funds separate?
Right, so the 1.6 stays where it's at unless we bring that and dissolve that?
It's already separated.
It's already separated.
By resolution, we just let it be and leave it there. What's contemplated by this resolution is...
The new money.
...funds moving forward with amendment number three, so I think it's already in place to address your...
So to vote in favor would to be to keep, to protect that 1.6 separate?
Keep the 1.6 separate. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 4.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the first and final reading of ordinance 2025-13, fiscal year 2025 budget amendment number three, and ordinance amending the amount of appropriations for the fiscal year beginning October 21st, pardon me, October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, by authorizing certain additions in the amount of $86,590 for general fund, authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to facilitate the changes identified and finding available unencumbered funds for the supplemental appropriation and/or reserve reduction. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I move to approve 4.2.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, 4.3.
4.3, sorry, yes. Councilmember Sanford, second, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Item 4.4, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2025-14, establishment of ad hoc citywide signage committee. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Seabrook, Texas, establishing an ad hoc citywide signage committee to study, evaluate, and make recommendations to city council regarding citywide signage, including, but not limited to, district signage, wayfinding, and directional signage, and updates to existing signage and related matters. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve 4.4.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Sanford seconds, any discussion about this?
Are we, at a later time, going to discuss who will be on the signage committee and that? Like, how is that going to work?
So my recommendation, bringing the resolution forward, is we're on the same page for membership that was discussed at our last meeting, and then also the scope of work. Because this is an ad hoc committee, I would recommend that if council would collect their nominees, and then on the next council meeting, that we could deliberate what those, membership is going to be based on nominees brought forward by council.
Okay, so I just want to get out there, since this was kind of an initiative and a recommendation by Jackie Rasko, based on her feedback from community members in Old Seabrook, I just would like to recommend, you know, on record, that she be included in this ad hoc committee.
Okay, any further discussion? I think if, you know, we're just, are you going to collect the, the names for now, Gail?
Right, so I think tonight, since this is just for the resolution, we'll prove it tonight, we'll put a subsequent item on the next agenda, and all council will approve the members.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Item 4.5, consider and take all appropriate action on Task Order 1, Witt O'Brien's Professional Services Agreement, PSA, including in an amount not, an amount not to exceed $8,000. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve 4.5.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Sessom is a second, and do I have any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. Item five, discussion, 5.1, discussion and update regarding the Pine Gully Pier demolition design, design alternatives, current grant application status, and future funding directions. Gail, take that away.
All right, mayor and council, wanted to put this back on. I know there has been a lot of discussion on the pier, just to make sure that our new council members are on the same page. So you've got before you a one-pager that just kind of recounts our history, where we're at currently, and what our current local match would look like. As previously stated, we did have in 2021 Hurricane Nicholas, we did not, as in previous storms, have any FEMA assistance as we have in the past. We usually get 75% back in some type of grant, and it assists the city on a local match. We went and the, next year, applied for a grant for, based on what we thought the cost was of $1 million for the 50/50 grant. We went out to bid, the county was a good partner, came back, and we were at 2.4 for the low bid, including demolition. Went back in 2024, and the county decided to go ahead and help us on the demolition part, so we brought that item forward to council. Council approved to go ahead and take the county up on the 50/50 for just the demolition. In 2025, the city then again applied for the construction portion, since the demolition was offered up, in the 50/50 grant, and then legislative session broke. So we've been following Senate Bill 2722. That today, we actually got email information that that bill has officially died, and that's what the county was putting a lot of their applications on hold for infrastructure. So that's now dead, we'll find out how the county wants to proceed. So our 2025 applicant for the pier hopefully is still in the chute. Recently, city council then discussed the pier again, and one of the council members brought up alternate designs, i.e. jacket designs. So I went back to the architect that we are previously using for the original design. He had worked a couple of projects where the jacket design was possible. He did work with a contractor to give us a cost estimate for jackets, mobilization, insurance, bond payments, what an entire project would look like. So the $1.9 million is his best cost estimate, professional opinion. The jackets themselves, from previous comments, does look like if it was just jackets, it's $800,000. But as you all know, it's more than just the jackets, it's a larger project. There has to be integrity, surveys done on each pier, you'd have to build the decking, side rails, ADA approaches, mobilization, insurance, bond payment, and that's where the 1.9 comes into play. It's a, it's a full package if we went out to bid, or not just jackets, but an entire contract. So again, as a recollection here at the end, for those of you that may not know, we did spend $180,000 on architectural and the drawings that we went out to bid in 2023, and the construction estimate right now, if you take out the demo, is approximately $2 million based on our previous bid result. So we are still looking at approximately $1 million of a current local match with the grants that we have right now. We do have a grant writer on call, and so we're continually looking to see if there's other grant opportunities that the pier could be able to partner with, with the county, and we could lower that current local match, but this is currently what we have right now. And I just wanted to make sure that council was updated on the project, what's currently going on with it.
Do you need any further direction from us? We're just waiting to hear from the county at this point if we can match a grant.
I do, I think on the...
Decide what to do.
Correct. The grant, I think, is key for us to determine if we want to move forward with any further demolition or anything, so that was brand-new news today, so I will report back, and if there's any change, we can decide from there.
But no timeline, they haven't given you no information?
No.
Maybe.
No, yeah, I, I got that email this afternoon, and so I'll check back with it.
Okay.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, when, when the architect gave us the first presentation, he had elevated the pier, and is, within this cost now, the roughly $2 million, that is with an elevated pier?
That's correct.
Is that with the passive decking, to where water can flow through it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we could go back to the architect and see if maybe not all of the piers would need to be pulled, and that we might be able to see what that demolition would actually cost us. I would leave the piers, of course, and, but only pull out the ones that would be in the way, so it may adjust the demolition cost some. If we continue to be in the $1 million, $2 million range, this is, this looks like a further bond that we may need to bring to the citizens, in my opinion, that we need, probably need to think about that as well, because this is a lot of money. So, it's my...
Can I clarify, so leaving the piers in, but still building the elevated piers, but leaving the smaller piers in?
Absolutely.
For the wildlife and so...
There's no reason to pull them all out.
Okay.
Pull out only the ones that are in the way.
Just to confirm, and I think you already said this, so I apologize for being a little dense, but that, those designs that we purchased previously, we wouldn't need to spend additional funds if we were to go with that design? Would those still be usable?
Correct, yes. I, I don't see, foresee any changes. We have a grant, or a GLO permit that fits the footprint, so our permit's good, we keep that going. The plans should be ready to rebid, and we would just need to turn around and rebid it.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. You're good, Gail? Yeah? All right. Item six, routine business. Item 6.1, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including legislative updates, Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, and City of Seabrook CIP projects.
All right, mayor and council, not a lot of meetings since your last council meeting. We did have P&amp;Z meet on May 22, public hearing, and final plat approval on Edgewater Town Homes was approved. The commission did hear a presentation from individual looking to do shipping containers for above and below-ground swimming pools, so the commission will be looking at that for possible recommendations back over to city council in the future. On our capital improvement projects, the waterline interconnect, we're still waiting on a vault piece and final installation. Seascape Waterlines project is continuing with the bore on Coronado, with the estimated completion still targeted for August of this year. And then we're getting some good news on one of our HMGP grants, we have a number of mobile generators that would be very helpful for hurricane season, and those may come in a little sooner than we expected. Our other generators, the larger ones, as you may recall, we're on eight-to-nine-month lead times, the mobile generators may be coming in, which will be helpful if we can get those in before hurricane season ends. Pine Gully Force Main Bore, we're, we're still working on that project. With the upcoming CIP, we've got some further discussion, we're going to approach council with. And then our Pelican Bay Municipal Pool Facility, this, since the bond did pass, we did jump into action. We have a contractor that is on a, what we call a pre-bid list, to do a design bid build, so we are in conversations right now. We'll wait to get a proposal. If that proposal comes back, we'll be bringing that forward to city council. So it's basically a turnkey contractor that could take us through demolition all the way through the construction, and help us through the bid process as well. And they have worked along with the contractor that did all of the renderings, and ultimately, if you recall, option B, that the $4 million was connected with. We're continuing to work at the fire station, so we do have a generator that, at the building, is, is out. That's why we're kind of excited if the mobile generators come in. We have a number of generators, we're working with the station to make sure that we'll have something there for future storms that are coming in. The training tower from our past bond, we finally got our final geotech report back, so we'll be moving over to an architect firm that will help with pad sites for that tower, and that project will hopefully start moving a little bit more. Our EMS expansion, so since our last meeting, we did open bids on the EMS expansion to the fire department. We had a number of bids, that's good. They were ranging from high to somewhere close to our budget, so we'll, those are under review right now with our architectural firm. We will wait for them to make a professional recommendation, check references, et cetera. So be looking either for the next or the following agenda that will be having a bid award for the EMS expansion. Sidewalk replacement is continuing to basically wrap up most of that project, and the $100,000 in your general fund has been completed. Brummerhoff Park Restrooms off Repstorf, we still are waiting for that delivery over there. We've got some plumbing work that we're still waiting for, and again, just as a side note, Brummerhoff Park, shade structures, pickleball, all of those were part of our ARPA funds, not part of general funds, that was just part of the COVID money that came in. And then final, our North Meyer project is also a Harris County 50/50 partnership, that's for reconstructing Meyer from Gail's feed store up to 146. We'd applied for a 50/50 grant that had been on hold for a while, we finally got the call. So since your last meeting, Public Works has met with the county to do kickoff meetings, so there'll be a number of walkthroughs with that, and hopefully we'll get the design underway and can report a better timeline as to when that project's going to kick off. Tech Stop Transportation, we, as you can see, a lot's going, still going back on at the 146 and Red Bluff intersection. I do have a recent update on the Red Bluff intersection or closure. They did report that they are hoping to get it open before the two-year. I reported last time that they were looking for mid-June. They've, this is all in the contractor's hands, so what Tech Stop's telling us, which is being communicated from the contractor, is probably going to be more into July at this point. But they are still looking to make sure that they get that opened. Their main concern is, they do have some work over there, they don't want to open it, close it, open it again, so that's why they've moved it to July, to make sure that all their work is complete. Any questions?
How long until they close it again? Do we know that, that Red Bluff?
So the actual exit ramp, what they're hoping to do is complete all of the work, and then once they open it, they can leave it open until, it'd probably be a year again before they would touch it. There is, they're going to rearrange the entrance and the exit ramps completely on the north side past the Geon plant. So once they go touching the brand-new entrance and exit, then there'll probably be some additional closures, but what they're telling us would be another year or year and a half before they would touch it again.
Thank you.
Have we had any updates from the county on Toddville? Because I know that a year or so ago, they were making noise.
We have not, I'm going to, no, all right, so our director of public works is shaking his head, no, we have no updates, so we'll, we can reach out and try to see if we can get some more information on that.
Anyone else? Thank you. Item 6.2, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next scheduled meeting is for June 17 at 6:00 p.m., and as a reminder, there's a special city council budget workshop scheduled for June 24 at 6:00 p.m. as well.
Hearing no further business, we'll adjourn the meeting at 6:49. Thank you all.